Coalition. And so, thank you so much for joining us here tonight in the Jade District. Orchards of 82nd, Apano's home is just across the street, and I'm delighted to welcome you here to our neighborhood. We're proud of the work that we have done in the Jade to build a resilient and healthy community. Through our place-based work, we are addressing health disparities, economic inequities, and a lack of resources for our families and communities. And over the years, we at Apano have seen that with strong city and community partnerships, we can build healthier, safer, and greener communities. I'm here tonight in that spirit. Just over one year ago, Portland voters did something historic. We overwhelmingly passed the first environmental initiative led by frontline community organizations, and I'm very proud to have been a part of that campaign. One of the priorities of the initiative was rigorous, community-based oversight provided by a grant committee to be composed of members that represent the diversity of Portland, including racial, economic, and geographic diversity. And tonight, we are so pleased to see the soon-to-be appointment of the final four committee members. This process has yielded outstanding results. In collaboration with the city, we recruited far and wide to bring forth candidates who met the standards set forth in the initiative. And I believe that, as you've seen, the qualifications and experience of the nine members have been truly exceptional and exceeded, I can say at least, what I had hoped for to see this composition of individuals representing so many communities. With this level of technical expertise and lived experience is just really a fulfillment of what we worked so hard for last year. So, I'd also like to thank the new members in advance. Serving on the grant committee is no small commitment. Developing a grant framework to create green energy and living wage jobs for underserved Portlanders in a way that truly honors the spirit and vision for justice of the initiative will take a great degree of time and talent. And I am confident that with these final four committee members, that we now have the range of knowledge, vision, and talent that we need to make the fund a success. We're grateful to the members for sharing their experience, expertise, and vision in building this historic program. In particular, I'd like to lift up the importance of their experience in minority contracting, healthy housing, and the intersections of labor and environmental justice. We also know that we will need to make sure that we bring other relevant experiences and knowledge, that they are heard as the committee begins its work. I'd also like to lift up the need that you and the city and current grant committee members have recognized about Indigenous representation and leadership, and we look forward to continuing to work on that. We offer our support in building deeper community connections, and I am confident that all of us here tonight, along with our partners, will do the same. So, we only got here through a strong partnership with the city, including commissioners, staff, and bureau employees. We've hired stellar program staff with deep community ties, and we are all prepared now to support the grant committee and its program development. So, we look forward to this partnership continuing so that we set the grant committee members up for success. And we need to also continually work to make sure that the communities that the fund is intended to serve have the capacity to benefit. So, we on the Coalition side are keeping busy, ensuring that all of Portland's communities will have the ability to realize their vision for how they want to see clean energy and good jobs look in their neighborhoods for their families. So, thank you again for the opportunity to celebrate this first phase of the Portland Clean Energy Fund and for your work to build this incredible grant committee. I hope that in one year or so, we will be back in some way to celebrate again, having already made critical investments at first round in our communities. And I'm confident that with our ongoing hard work and collaboration, that we will have seen real movement for climate justice in one year. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Wheeler and city commissioners. I'm grateful for the invitation to speak with you all today. My name is Anissa Pemberton, and I use they/them pronouns. I am the Just Transition and Equity Organizer at 350 PDX. We recognize that climate change is happening now, and we also recognize that it is already disproportionately impacting those living on the margins of our Portland community. One year after the passage of this historic ballot initiative, we are appointing the final members of the Portland Clean Energy Fund Grant Committee. I am so pleased to see the wide array of skills and perspectives that will be at the table, and I'm so excited to see them recommend applications for grant funds for the Portland Clean Energy Fund. I'm also really appreciative of City Council being in this space, in this community tonight. I live very close to this campus, and I feel very proud seeing East of 82nd represented. Last time I gave testimony, I shared that I grew up in rural Illinois, in an industrial-agricultural town that was extremely polluted. Today, I wanted to share with you my lived experience as a working-class person of color in Portland. When I first moved here, my partner, housemate, and I could only afford a very cheap apartment in southwest Portland. I actually rode the bus with Commissioner Fritz, funny story. The heat of the summer and the cold of the winter could be felt through the single pane, outdated windows. We had very poor insulation. In these seasons when we most needed relief from the impacts of climate change, we were unable to really get it because of our infrastructure. And when we did try to heat and cool our apartment, it cost us $300 a month. So, we went into pretty hard credit card debt, my partner and I, trying to survive that. I have the privilege of a college degree, and so I was able to move into a higher income bracket, but the debt follows us. It follows a lot of people in our economy. Wages are very low, and debt is very high, and the gap between the rich and poor is growing, as I'm sure you all know. And the reason I share this story is because it's very similar to the people who will be impacted by the Portland Clean Energy Fund, except I hope they have a different ending than me. The Portland Clean Energy Fund is meant to solve these problems for working-class poor people, for women, for LGBTQ people, and it's really meant to update the multifamily apartments that the working class is living in in Portland and already struggling to afford. It is a truly intersectional program that touches the inequities of race, class, and gender, and it really recognizes that US unemployment, while it's currently low, underemployment is a huge problem in this country. As we celebrate today, I hope we all hold close the impact that the Portland Clean Energy Fund will have on our most vulnerable communities. The Portland Clean Energy Fund Coalition and the City of Portland has accomplished already really great things together. We've hired really very skilled program staff and recruited awesome grant committee members who will safeguard this fund. It is now our shared responsibility to support these extraordinary people and do what we can to clear the obstacles in this path, including incorporating the voices of Indigenous people. It also means we need to put our trust in their eventual decisions and amplify their outreach efforts and offer capacity and expertise. We must focus on our shared efforts to build capacity in the communities that the Portland Clean Energy Fund is intended to primarily benefit. The PSF program staff at the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability are doing excellent work already in partnership with our Coalition, and our Coalition intends to continue supporting the implementation efforts for a successful program launch. Thank you very much for inviting me to give testimony today and hearing my story. This is a moment we can all take really great pride in, and I'm really excited to see how this program shapes up. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hurstey.
Anissa, thank you so much for your presentation. I actually had a question, and only because you brought it up. I think one of the biggest challenges with weatherization and making apartments in East Portland energy-efficient will be how do we prevent displacement after we do this fabulous job of making those properties so that people aren't spending a small fortune for heat in the winter and then air in the summer? Have you been thinking about this? Because you sound like you've been thinking, I've been staying awake at night because I can't...
Yeah.
There has to be a way that we can make the investment without losing our family housing at the same time. Any thoughts?
Yeah, I totally agree. My understanding is that the legislation includes a, well, Jenny probably can use the right legalese for this, but includes a guarantee that landlords cannot increase their housing over a certain amount, or the cost of housing over a certain amount, and then therefore kick out the people. Because it is a concern that when you upgrade weatherization, that means the property is then worth more.
Yes.
So, then they could do that. Jenny, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, I can also defer to Sam, but yeah, I think that that provision that was included in there, that the interpretation with the grant committee's oversight, that we can come up with a way to ensure that there's not a windfall that comes to the property owner and that those benefits are passed along to the tenants, so similar to other affordable housing incentives or opportunities for subsidies or upgrades, that there would be some kind of provision, because that absolutely would be contrary to our purpose. At the same time, I am excited for the opportunity that this will help preserve a lot of our low, more affordable, existing housing inventory. I'm very hopeful that we'll be able to preserve and maintain good-quality housing.
So, I don't know that there's anything currently in the initiative that actually provides that guarantee. And so, I think it's important for us to talk to lawyers before we're actually having the first money out the door, so that we are intentional about how we roll it out and what the commitment must be from the landlord, right? I think a year from now, landlords will be beating our door down, wanting to work with the Portland Clean Energy Fund to get this benefit. But I think initially, unless we're very intentional, it is really an opportunity for people to act badly, and I just want to make sure that there's no opportunity for bad behavior when we're investing in our community. So, thank you. Sam, did you have a response?
Mayor Wheeler, Commissioner Hurstey. I would just say thank you. I appreciate that, and that's something that's certainly on the radar of staff, and it's certainly a thing that we plan to bring to the committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Hurstey.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Wheeler, commissioners.
Hello.
My name is Taryn Evans, and I'm here today representing the Coalition of Communities of Color. We are an alliance of 19 culturally-specific, community-based organizations throughout the Portland metro region. Almost exactly a year ago today, the Portland Clean Energy Initiative passed with over 60% of the vote. This was no small feat and due in large part to the organizing efforts of the PSF Coalition, of which CCC and many of our member organizations are a part. PSF is truly a groundbreaking measure that directs resources to communities that stand on the front lines of the climate crisis. It provides a steady stream of revenue to support clean energy projects and green jobs and dedicates funding to communities most impacted by climate change. Though the passage of this measure represents a victory for our communities, the real test of a measure is in its implementation. The grant committee is charged with an important job of implementing this measure faithfully according to the will of the people who voted for it. We applaud these appointees to the inaugural PSF Grant Committee and thank them for stepping into this important role of service to build and carry out a successful grant program. We are particularly pleased to see experience in minority contracting, healthy homes, and the intersection of environmental and labor issues present in this round of appointments. It is now up to us to support this committee and put trust in their recommendations. We must also work on building capacity in communities that this measure is intended to primarily benefit. PSF program staff at BPS and the PSF Coalition have already begun to collaborate on this work. We must continue this work and ensure that frontline communities that have unduly borne the burden of the climate crisis are well-supported and applying for funding and are able to truly benefit from this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, I'll entertain a motion.
I still move.
Second.
We have a motion to accept the report and approve the appointments. We have a second from Commissioner Udaley. Any further discussion? Carla, please call the roll.
Udaley.
Well, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. The Portland Clean Energy Fund is a transformative measure that will help fund a just transition to a green economy essential in our fight against climate change and for a better future for all. The work that this committee is tasked to complete will drive social, economic, and environmental justice for frontline communities within Portland who've been denied economic opportunity and often suffer the most from the impacts of environmental degradation. I think there's incredible opportunities with affordable housing that we haven't even realized yet, and definitely anti-displacement and permanent affordability are at the forefront of my thinking around this. I was an early endorser and strong supporter of PSF. I'm confident that these amazing committee members will be outstanding stewards of the program. I thank you for your willingness to serve, and I can't wait to start seeing the results. I vote aye.
Fritz.
This is so encouraging, as was mentioned, and thank you. What a great committee. Thank you to the five who then selected the four. What a great concept to put into a ballot measure and have done, so thank you to our staff as well. Thank you to everybody who came here tonight. It's really very exciting work. Aye.
Hurstey.
Thank you. I like to call myself the mother of the Portland Clean Energy Fund Initiative, only because I put a year and a half into it before I went off and did this other thing. What I know is that we centered racial, social, and environmental justice in this measure. What we were very intentional about was ensuring that frontline communities, those most impacted by climate degradation, would be the beneficiaries of these resources. What I stay up at night worried about is all your new best friends that are going to show up and tell you how green they are and how they just can't wait to be your new best friend and partner with you on this effort. I want to caution you, be skeptical, check the research, make sure that what you're being told is real, and know that I will be there to support you every step of the way. This was a community effort because I'd like to remind folks that the city wouldn't implement it. The city wouldn't send it to the ballot for us. We, the people, had to take it to we, the people, and we, the people, spoke very loudly. At like 67% of them said, yeah, this is the right thing to do. I hope this is a model for other efforts. People shy away from race in this city and this state. They pretend we'll deal with that later, and what we know is that if you don't deal with it on the front end, it's never dealt with. I am proud to be a aye vote for this measure. Thank you.
Wheeler.
That's a tough act to follow. So, I'm just going to say, I'm with mother, Mother Hurstey. This is a great group of nominees, and they join five fantastic current appointees, and this was a great panel, and I really appreciate the issues that you raised here, and I want to thank the staff. The only thing I want to underscore that Commissioner Hurstey said is this came from the community. This is a great example of how our community took its values and drove those values through the ballot box to being the policy of this city, and it now puts us in the forefront of addressing the climate action and the intersection with social justice and putting first and foremost those communities that have historically not only not participated from the benefits of these efforts, but who have in fact been steamrolled the hardest by the negative consequences of climate change. And so, this is truly a great and extraordinary opportunity. I thank all of you who have chosen to serve on this community, on this committee. It's going to be a lot of work. It's going to be really tough, but I don't think we have impaneled a group of people this talented and this diverse previously in any other capacity. You have my full confidence. I'll be watching this. The City Council will be watching this. The city will be watching this, but I'll tell you what, the rest of the nation's watching it too, because it's cutting-edge. I'm happy to support. I vote aye. The report's adopted. The appointments are approved. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda, and I want to just say, we don't rehearse these things. We're way over schedule, so I'm going to speed things up a little bit, and I know Sam's been talking to the presenters to try and tighten up the presentations. Item 1030, please, Carla.
Authorize a memorandum of understanding to accept assistance, support, and resources from the Natural Resources Defense Council as outlined in the American Cities Climate Challenge Support Package.
Colleagues, we're now going to hear about the American Cities Climate Challenge from the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability and the Bureau of Transportation. In 1993, Portland became the first city in the United States to adopt a carbon reduction strategy. Fast forward to the present day, we continue striving to be climate trailblazers as part of this critical challenge. This year, we're seeing President Trump's decision to formally withdraw from the Paris Climate Agreement. Portland joins many other cities as part of the American Cities Climate Challenge to say to the world, "We are still in." We remain deeply committed to meeting America's pledge for fighting for our future. Presenting tonight on this MOU are Policy and Planning Projects Group Manager Art Pierce and Chief Sustainability Manager Michelle Crim. Good evening. Welcome.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for having us. We've been asked to give you kind of the express version of this presentation, so we'll do our best to bring you through.
Please. I appreciate that.
You should be able to do it in 20 slides, 20 seconds each.
You're right. Absolutely. We'll give you the Pechicucha version.
Thank you.
So, we're going to give you a very quick recap of the climate challenge. You've heard some updates about this previously, some update of the progress that we've made to date, and very specifically, we're asking for your approval by resolution for the memorandum of understanding with NRDC that is bringing us the resources that we're receiving through this challenge. Very quick overview of what this is. This is a two-year challenge that was launched by Bloomberg Philanthropies, very specifically focused on the objective of augmenting and accelerating climate action in response for cities, and there are 25 of those cities that received this award, which is about 2.5 million of technical support and resources for participating cities. Quick visual of the other 24 cities that are part of this, a really august group of cities from all throughout the country, really focused in on reducing emissions from transportation and decarbonizing energy is the focus of our specific application. It goes without saying that those are the most important sectors for us to make change and address, transportation being 42% of our Multnomah County carbon emissions and building energies being about 40% as well. On the good news side, Multnomah County, we are continuing to outbat our peers nationally, and we are trending in decreasing direction generally for carbon emissions, and so that's an encouraging aspect. I think the most discouraging really, in particular, lies on transportation, but also on building energy, continuing to need to push declines. For transportation, we're seeing an increase for sectors in terms of our specific contribution to that, and so it sort of heightens the challenge for transportation actions that help us address these impacts. All told, as part of the climate challenge, the 25 cities that are participating in the climate challenge will contribute to a reduction of 40 million metric tons by 2025, which is the equivalence of 8.5 million cars off the roads or 10 coal power plants closed, which is no small-scale challenge or small-scale impact. Michelle's going to talk to you a little bit more detail about the work we're doing.
Great. So, for the record, I'm Michelle Crim, the Chief Sustainability Officer, and so those 25 cities can essentially create their own strategy for the work that they're going to do, and we put together Portland's initial proposal for that in 2018 when we applied for the challenge. Over the last year, we've been working with the partners that came to the table through the challenge, as well as the community partners, to refine our goals and our strategies and our tactics that make up our game plan. And you can see here in this graphic on Slide 10, the areas where we have our big moves and the bright ideas that we're looking to advance through this challenge, and we'll go into a little bit of detail on what those are to tell you what we've been working on and what's coming next. As has been a theme tonight, we recognize that while the climate crisis affects everyone, it does not affect everyone equally, and people of color and low-income communities bear the brunt and are disproportionately impacted by climate change. And these frontline communities, together with youth, have not traditionally had a seat at the table to significantly influence the city's climate policies, our priorities, and our investments, and that needs to change going forward. So, we're really focused on making sure that any big moves and bright ideas that we're pursuing to achieve the carbon reductions that we're looking to achieve through this climate challenge are done so in ways that are not leaving folks behind and are not exacerbating existing disparities in the community. As Art mentioned, what this challenge does is it brings to the table a lot of resources for the city to tap into to help us do this work, and those resources sort of fall into four buckets, and so on Slide 12, you can see some of those organizations listed. The top left-hand corner, those are organizations that are providing us with project management and capacity building support, the NRDC, Bloomberg Philanthropies, Delivery Associates. On the upper right are organizations that provide deep technical expertise to us, including the World Resources Institute and Rocky Mountain Institute that are helping us on the building side of things, and Nelson Nygaard and Ideas 42 that are helping with the transportation-related projects. The lower left, the Urban Sustainability Directors Network, the National Association of City Transportation Officials are large networks that provide us with opportunities for deepening our partnerships, peer learning, and cities helping each other along the way. And the Energy Foundation is providing financial support to Verde and to Opel Environmental Justice Oregon to help provide capacity to those organizations to actively participate in this work with us. And lastly, on the lower right, are organizations that are helping us to get smarter about how we measure our progress and how we communicate our story, and so we're working with these organizations to help us identify better data reporting tools and to improve the transparency and accessibility of that information.
Commissioner Hurstey.
Yes.
Could you tell me what SEI stands for again?
SEI is the Stockholm Energy Institute. Yeah.
Because I thought you were talking self-enhancement, ain't what's helping you.
Oh, yeah. Nope, nope. So, Art and I are going to breeze through, just giving you a sample of the things that we've been working on and what's coming next. So, one of the areas that we're focused on is our own buildings. So, city facilities, the energy performance in those facilities. So, we've done some benchmarking to look at those buildings, and it's probably not surprising to learn that, particularly in our large buildings, we underperform compared to other similar buildings here in Portland. So, we're working with those large building owners and operators, including the Office of Management and Finance, the Fire Bureau, and Parks, to develop an action plan for what are the investments that we need to make in those facilities in order to get our energy performance up. And so, we're actively working on that and tapping into those resources from the challenge to help us do those assessments. And part of what we have coming up is to implement the mayor's budget directive related to climate in terms of working with those bureaus that are managing those buildings to come back with a proposal for how we would propose funding, doing both the technical assessments of the improvements that need to be made, the condition of the equipment in those buildings, and then proposing sort of how we would go about financing and investing in our own facilities so that the city can walk the talk as it relates to our own buildings. The other thing that we're focused on is community solar and getting renewables into the hands of community, and so on that, we're working on two fronts. One, to identify what's the right role of the city as it relates to these community solar projects, and then also working to support the development of at least one community solar project benefiting people of color and low-income communities.
And can we make sure that as we do this, we're in coordination with the people that we just appointed to PSF?
You bet.
There's a good collaboration to be had there.
Yes. Yep, absolutely. And so, what specifically we've been doing is working with Verde and partners that they pulled together, including Hacienda CDC, the Bonneville Environmental Foundation, Grid Alternatives, and the Energy Foundation with the goal of helping them position themselves to be a developer of these community solar projects when the program is launched by the state here in December. In addition to that, we've identified that the ideal role for the City of Portland to play in these projects is as an anchor tenant, so similar to a mall that needs a big anchor tenant. The city is positioned to provide that for community solar projects. We have plenty of brown energy that we are still using in city facilities that we can reinvest in. reinvest in these local projects. So, with that, I will turn it over to Art to talk about some of the transportation stuff.
All right. Well, on the transportation side, one of the key strategies and one of the most effective things that we believe we can do to reduce carbon emission is get more people on transit. This is an effort that I've personally spent a lot of energy in recent years and have been really, really excited to watch this idea catch fire through our commissioner's office and throughout the community, and one of the real big realizations for us was how much this is a city of Portland impact on the transit system, in which we have the ability to make better choices about how we're allocating right-of-way to support the transit operations. Already, we've been making progress with the enhanced transit corridors process and are now moving into the next phase, which is the Rose Lane Vision, which we'll hear more about in the next item. So far, even just the small set of actions we did this summer have benefited 75,000 transit riders per day, and that is just access to the three bridges in the central city, Madison, Everett, and Burnside. For instance, the bus that I took to this meeting today, the number two, is benefiting from a 20% less delay in the PM peak hour, very, very significant for what was not that many blocks of change that needed to occur, but very, very hard decision-making in terms of trade-offs for us to take on. And I think it's a good example of how the Climate Challenge is pressing us to question our assumptions further and pressing us through the collaboration with peer cities to challenge each other to take these collaborative actions further. And so, through the network of other cities, we are getting best-practice information from the other cities of how they are accomplishing the level of transit speed and reliability, and also through Nelson Nygaard, a local consultant, is helping us with the technical analysis to look at where to prioritize lines. But we are not even close to slowing down on this. In terms of better bus priorities, just in the last couple of days, we saw the restriping in collaboration with the Multnomah County. Thank you, Multnomah County, for Burnside Bridge heading eastbound. Very, very exciting to see that coming in, and we are working towards a much broader initiative called the Rose Lanes, which the commissioner has done a great job and her staff of pushing forward, and we're heading into deep public involvement in the month of December, and then pushing towards a council action, returning to council in February of 2020 with a very specific proposal for the corridors that we'll be prioritizing.
Art, you've forgotten my favorite item, which is experimental application of red paint.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, you're right.
As the arts commissioner.
I'm skipping all the written points, yes, but so, already, we have received approval from FHWA to experiment with red, and so you've seen some key applications of that, and we would like to take the Rose Lane concept and initiative and apply it to that red paint experiment. So, there's a lot of potential for artistic collaboration as we're heading into the spring months, and who knows where this will take us, for sure. There's continued progress for cycling as well. We've been adding some protected bike lanes within some central city areas, as well as have a number of projects that are underway and in design that will be adding protected bikeways within some of those key corridors. There is construction coming up for Better NATO next summer, as well as construction will start underway for some of these other key corridors on Southwest Fourth, Broadway, and Southeast Hawthorne, so a lot coming in terms of low-carbon response. The key message through all of this, and certainly the message that we heard from the previous item, is that this has to be grounded in people. It has to be grounded in people who can help us implement this change, and so a great part of the overall support package is focusing on transportation demand management, encouragement strategies, and so we're working with Ideas 42 and some other groups that are very good at collaborating around behavior change strategies to help Portlanders adapt to what their new suite of options might be and the behaviors they might need to take to help us reach our climate goals. Over the next year, we will be completing a TDM action plan, looking at the types of mechanisms that we can be bringing out to the community. Transportation Demand Management Action Plan, thank you. Launching a transit encouragement program, and then also targeting some particular key areas to do behavior change sprints, to look at how we can help, in this case, families see about adapting their daily routine to have a lower impact on the environment. This will also include new implementation of the transportation wallet, and where people are able to get transit fares, scooter credits, those kind of things through our programmatic processes. One of the other key moves coming up is we are starting a conversation much more broadly about how to apply our deep focus on equity and environmental justice towards these climate actions, and so we're looking at equitable mobility, partnering with Opel Environmental Justice, as well as other organizations, with funding through the ACC, the American Climate Challenge pool, and then we are just under the process of recruiting for pricing options for Equitable Mobility Community Task Force, and proud to say that we have over 130 applicants wanting to join the next version of a very deep and meaningful collaboration on what are the options and of how we can look at pricing tools to help us further our equity outcomes. This suite of options comes together into a sort of connective tissue where we are looking at the Rose Lane Project, the Central City In-Motion Interventions, the pricing options, along with the other links to our land use and transportation strategies to be able to move these options forward in an integrated strategy. So, with our lightning round presentation.
That was brilliant.
Yeah.
Brilliant.
So, very, very excited to bring to you today the MOU with NRDC for the support that we have been receiving.
NRDC.
Oh, I'm sorry. National Resource Defense Council, who is the agency partner who has brought together the American Climate Challenge support package. And so, this MOU is sort of a crucial step in continuing to get the support. They've been patient with us as we've worked through our steps, but this is a key step to keep the staff person that has been helping us push through all this work, as well as the suite of technical resources that we're receiving.
Tell us about the Embedded Climate Advisor.
Oh, yeah. So, Emma Segor, who's in at the back, maybe she can wave.
There she is.
Has already proven to be the change agent that the National Resources Defense Council promised us we would receive, and has really transformed already the depth of relationship between us and the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, as well as the level of intentionality and focus that we've brought to these specific initiatives. It really has been an effective way to augment the momentum we already were trying to create with really targeted resources.
Very good. Any questions before we move to any public testimony? Carla, Commissioner Daley?
Do you have some talking points? Are we skipping those?
Did you want to speak?
I'll just save them for my closing.
Okay. Carla, has anybody signed up for public testimony?
Yes, we have four people who signed up.
Very good.
We'll just call all four. Doug Klotz, Harry Simpson, Machu Williams, and Jessie Moran. All come up.
Mayor, are we doing three minutes or two?
Why don't we do two, just because I, and I apologize for that, PCC has been a fantastic host, and we want to come back here, so I don't want to overstay our welcome by too much. So, if you can, I won't be too hard about it, but if you can try to keep it within two minutes, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Do you want to go ahead and start?
Yes, okay.
You can sit down, you don't have to.
All right. They're going to talk about, you know, are the business factories putting those lids to stop the smog and that coming out? What is going to control the pricing of it? Because there's very limited companies that make those smoke things to quit the smoke coming out of the factories. What is going to limit, make sure they're not overpaying on what they need for air pollution? And the other question is, you have limited time. When you voted, voted on the last thing, why did you take so much time? Just pass it, and we would have more time. I mean, you voted on the last.
I can't disagree with that.
Everyone repeated it. This goes on every meeting I've been. Everyone repeats the same thing and say, "We're out of time." Why can't you, as commissioners, when you agree on something, agree on it and not waste our time? Because wasting our time when you keep on saying the same thing each one of you.
So, we shouldn't have heard anybody else, we shouldn't have listened to the presentations, we should have just voted because we all knew that we wanted to do it?
I mean.
I respectfully disagree.
When you introduce yourself, you agree with the person. Don't repeat what the other person says. That'll save a lot of time.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
And you could actually give us good information while you're here?
I.
That's fine, that's what we wanted to share.
My reason comes, I thought it would be TriMet. Why are we giving TriMet money when they don't, they never knows how to schedule a bus? And I know a lot of people here, as I see outside, you see five buses, then none. I had to go into the drugstore on 82nd, but when I crossed the street, five buses passed by.
Okay.
The next one is an hour and a half later. That's really helping the public.
Sorry, thank you. Good evening.
Hey, good evening. I'm Machu Williams. I'm here with Bike Loud and the Portland Bus Lane Project in support of the Street Trust, and I would just like to congratulate the Office of Commissioner Daley on the unveiling of the Rose Lane Project. If her staff would accept these red flowers in celebration of this event, I'd be glad to offer it to you and welcome rapid development of this transit prioritization out to East Portland to help mitigate the displacement that Portland has faced in recent years. But thank you, thank you so much, Commissioner Daley.
That's very sweet.
Very appropriate gift as well.
I'm Doug Klotz. I'm just here to support not only PCEF, but the Rose Lanes, which I think is a great way to increase transit service, make it work better, and doesn't cost very much money. So, I'm really glad to see this.
Thank you. And did you want to say?
And I'm Jessie Moran. As the co-founder of the Portland Bus Lane Project, I'd like to thank you all for taking a little idea for two blocks of dedicated bus lane and turning it into a vision to prioritize those of us who are transit-dependent across the city. As a co-lead for the 350 PDx Transportation Justice Team, I'd like to let you know that we will be ready to support you in bringing this idea to East Portland so that all of us may benefit from it equally and urgently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it very much.
And these aren't roses, they're ranunculus, which happens to be my favorite flower. I feel like somebody must have told you that. It's the nicest thing a man has done for me all week, so. No offense, Mayor.
You know what? It was a great gesture, and I really can't top it. That was nice. That was one of the nicer things I've seen at council in a while. Any further discussion? Carla, please call the roll.
You, Daley.
Well, first of all, I want to commend Mayor Wheeler, who, the day after Trump announced that we would withdraw from the Paris Climate Accord, led the council in a resolution saying that we're still in. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, come on, people. Our community must take bold action if we're to live up to our reputation as a green pioneer and combat climate change. As the commissioner in charge of the Bureau of Transportation, I'm acutely aware that we have been going in the wrong direction in recent years, increasing our carbon emissions from transportation around 9% since 1990. We have to break this trend if we're going to avoid a climate catastrophe. That means we must all rise to the challenge, and the city is committed to paving the way, but we can't do it without the community. We're also committed to doing so in a way that centers our equity values. Climate change is an issue of economic and racial injustice, as well as environmental crisis. People of color and low-income individuals are disproportionately impacted by climate change. My office has been closely involved with the Climate Challenge team to ensure we center the voices of our community partners, representing historically underserved groups, as we advance several ambitious efforts, and I vote aye.
Fritz.
I've served with three mayors, Mayor Adams, Hales, and Wheeler, and they have had different focuses and different priorities. They've all put climate crisis front and center of their agendas, and I'm really grateful for that. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the good work being done. We all know we've got to do even more. Aye.
Hardisty.
I look forward to us both obtaining the resources that help us move forward around addressing the climate degradation issues that we, our communities, are confronting. I'm always cautiously optimistic when some fat cat from another state decides that, you know, they're going to give us stuff, right, to make us look good. I think my cautionary tale would be that we will have lots of green projects taking place over the next few years, and I want to be very mindful that though there's synergy between the Portland Clean Energy Fund and this Climate Challenge that we're taking on, I want to be very clear that the Portland Clean Energy Fund is supposed to benefit communities of color and not government, and so government could help be a partner by helping to train the workforce, helping with some other things, but we have to be very intentional about making sure that we're not screwing this up when we actually roll it out. And so, I applaud the efforts that we are taking. They're absolutely critical to our community, but we are going to be going down different tracks that will complement each other, and I hope that there's some opportunity for some real synergy. And let me just say, I live in East Portland, and if you want us on the bus, we actually need buses, so let's start working on that. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you. Next item, 1031.
Accept Report of the Rose Lane Project.
Commissioner Daley.
Thank you, Mayor. I am pleased to provide this report to council about the process we are undertaking to develop the Rose Lane Project. Tonight is our unofficial kickoff for the community engagement phase of the project. We're looking forward to hearing from people who live, work, and/or learn in Portland about their transit needs and challenges in order to best serve the most people throughout our city. I know my colleagues and I are all deeply concerned about our climate and the state of the world we are living for our children. When the mayor assigned the Bureau of Transportation to me, I identified our most urgent priorities as safety, equity, and climate change. These priorities must inform every decision we make about our transportation system moving forward, and lucky for us and our ambitious goals, they go hand in hand, as addressing one is likely to deliver benefits in all three areas. For instance, the Rose Lane Project will improve our transit system, decrease transit commute times, and attract more riders, and getting more people on the bus where they need to go faster is safer, more equitable, and better for the environment. Here are a few facts for you to consider. Portland is growing, and so is demand on our roadways, and we're really not going to build more roads. Transportation, particularly single occupancy vehicle trips, is a significant contributor to our climate crisis and accounts for more than 40% of our local carbon emissions. Congestion has increased rapidly, and buses and streetcars are stuck in traffic, along with all the people on board. I'm happy to say, yesterday on Burnside, I was in a car, and I saw two buses whip by while I waited to get through, and unfortunately, one car, so we might need to work on the signage a little bit more. And finally, transit delay and unreliability impairs people's access to jobs, school services, and other daily needs, and discourages ridership, as was previously noted by a commenter. We need to more than double transit ridership to meet our transportation and climate goals. High ridership transit is the most efficient, equitable, and sustainable way to move people. At the same time, we cannot just use numbers and data to inform our policies and projects. We must engage and listen to the people who are being least well-served by our current transportation system in order to design a better system for all of us. I am a child of the '70s, as old as Earth Day, raised by countercultural parents, as well as grandparents, who survived the Depression, so the practices of reduce, reuse, and recycle are part of my DNA. Environmental concerns are nothing new to me, or I'm sure many of you. However, we do have new and alarming information that suggests we're headed for catastrophe if we don't make huge changes in the way we live and treat the earth and its limited resources. Concern is not enough, we need action. With the support of the community, the city, TriMet, and TriMet, the Rose Lane Project stands to be a significant action toward combating climate change. I asked PBOB staff to do a quick back-of-the-envelope estimate on the kind of change we need to see in order to have a fighting chance to avert the path we're currently on. to have a fighting chance to avert the path we're currently on. What they came up with was that every resident of Portland who currently drives a single occupant vehicle needs to reduce their car trips by fifty percent. For those of us who live in bikeable, walkable, transit-rich neighborhoods, that should be easily achievable, unless your car is part of your job, or you have some other challenge. But for the nearly fifty percent of Portlanders who don't live in such a neighborhood, or have such long commutes that public transportation is not a viable option, we have to do better. Expanding our network of buses, light rail, streetcars, and continuing to improve our bike and pedestrian infrastructure is a conversation for another day. The Rose Lane Project is focused on improving our existing system and prioritizing mass transit. My Director of Policy, Jamie Duhamel, is here to explain our process thus far and moving forward. We will also be welcoming several community partners, or we are welcoming them, from Opal, the Street Trust, and Rosewood Initiative to testify in the experience and the need, urgent need for this work. Welcome, Jamie.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening. My name, council, my name is Jamie Duhamel, and I am the Director of Policy for Commissioner Chloe Udaley and a primary liaison for the Bureau of Transportation. I have the distinct pleasure of presenting to you about the process we are undertaking to create a citywide enhanced transit network that focuses on racial equity, climate justice, and direct community benefits. Unfortunately, what you will not be hearing tonight is the proposed scope of the project, as that has not yet been fully identified, but we are very close, very close, I promise. What you will be hearing tonight are the values we are using to inform that project. In September of 2018, the mayor gifted Commissioner Udaley and our office with the Bureau of Transportation. As you all know very well, our primary focus until that point had been affordable housing development, tenant protections, and civic engagement. So, taking on a bureau of over a thousand employees on a topic we were not focused on provided us with a unique challenge. It did not take long for us to realize that transportation clearly intersects with all of Commissioner Udaley's values, including racial equity, climate justice, economic justice, anti-displacement, affordable housing, and livability. So, we immediately set about the process of identifying the ways in which transportation can improve lives, create economic opportunity, decrease displacement, increase safety, and slow down the impending climate catastrophe. Lo and behold, PBOT had already provided an answer to us in its beautiful Enhanced Transit Corridors Plan that was unanimously passed by almost all of you in 2018. This plan identifies the types of system improvements that can help make transit more attractive and reliable for people to get to work, to school, and to meet their daily needs, especially for people who are transit-dependent. The Rose Lane Project is simply an accelerated implementation plan that envisions a bold, citywide redistribution of right-of-way and other tools in the toolbox that this plan provides, that helps get buses out of traffic and through the intersections and across town, and makes the system more rapid, reliable, and full. When it came to council, the ETC plan identified the ways in which enhanced transit contributes to a better experience for riders, encourages more ridership, and helps to mitigate new traffic growth. But Commissioner Udaley wanted to approach this project the way we approach all of our work, which is through a racial equity lens that requires authentic relationships with community partners and considers first and foremost the expertise of people with lived experience. This approach was only further informed by our recent citywide training on results-based accountability, which teaches us how to work backwards from a population-level goal and to center racial equity in our policy planning. For those watching in the audience tonight, results-based accountability is a different way of thinking about how to solve for complex problems, by first identifying the conditions of well-being that we would like to accomplish and working backwards from there. It requires us to conduct root cause analyses of existing disparities preventing us from achieving those conditions of well-being. But most importantly, it teaches us that policymaking is never neutral. It is always either actively dismantling systems of racism and oppression, or it is actively causing additional harm. We must integrate racial equity into every level of work that we do, and the RBA process is a really great way to do that. So, a big thank you to the Office of Equity and Human Rights for starting us on this journey of greater accountability to everyone that we work to serve in the city. So, when I took the training with several PBOT staff, we started with a condition of well-being that was basically, all Portlanders will use transportation that is affordable, reliable, healthy, and safe. And when we asked ourselves what the disparities were, again with a lens on race, we identified commute times as a condition of inequity that was causing harm to people of color. According to census data from 2015, and it is likely worse today, we found there was a big difference in average commute times broken down by race. The data tells us that the average black commuter spends an additional five minutes one way just to get to work. That doesn't sound like a lot when put that way, but that is a twenty percent difference, which works out to be an additional fifty minutes per week, over three hours in a month, or forty hours in a year. The average commuter who is black spends an entire work week longer sitting in traffic every year. Add to that the growing body of research that finds commute times are the single most important factor that help people out of poverty and into economic opportunity, and it becomes crystal clear that access to rapid and reliable public transportation must be a high priority and must benefit people of color first and foremost. We cannot create a better transit system that does not incorporate the needs of the communities that are suffering the most disparities because our transportation system was never originally designed to serve them to begin with. That is why we created an internal stakeholder panel that consists of people and organizations that represent a wide variety of users, but who also work with a deep equity lens. This is an informal table, so folks participate as they can, and they come and go. And we're also in early talks with a few other organizations, like the Sunrise Movement, for example, to help round out our representation. This panel is helping our office to identify the ways in which our traditional modeling and technical approach to transportation infrastructure may be inadvertently causing harm to people of color by not considering their specific experiences or needs. I convene this group once a month and ask them to challenge our approach, our assumptions, and our goals. I then take that information back to Commissioner Udaley and PBOT, and we use that to inform the draft proposal. Once we have the final initial proposal gelled by the end of this month, I'm very excited, we will be sharing with the entire city and asking for feedback that will help us finalize the project before we bring it to you for approval on February 13th. And if you're paying attention, that's the day before Valentine's Day, because we love Rose Lanes. A good example of the ways in which our panel has helped inform our assumptions is by helping us create Better Off Measures, which is an RBA term, that center people-based outcomes. When we first developed some sample maps of the potential Rose Lane routes, the assumption used, the assumptions used were technical in nature and centered congestion and delays. That is clearly a very logical and appropriate lens with which to build a transit network. However, we had not taken the time to also use people-based metrics to inform the map. So, together, we identified measures that we will now use to analyze the proposal and identify any potential routes that we may have missed originally, or maybe misidentified the right types of tools in a specific location that best addresses the outcomes that we're looking for. So, as you can see by these measures, we believe that the Rose Lane Project can do a lot of good in people's lives. Our primary goal is to make it easier for people of color to shorten their commute time and access work. In addition, we believe this proposal can make public transit a viable option for people to choose for trips to work, school, and other daily needs. We believe it can provide some additional freedom for people to choose where they want to live and work. We believe reliable public transportation can help lower costs, both in time and money, in comparison to owning and using a car. And finally, we believe that we can positively impact air quality and the health impacts bad air quality creates, particularly in communities of color. I want to make a special note about the last Better Off Measure, as I have focused most of this presentation so far on racial equity. I know you are all aware of this, but it bears repeating at every opportunity. And that is that transportation justice is economic justice, is climate justice, is racial justice. They are deeply intersectional. And we, when we center justice for people of color, we are also centering climate action and economic opportunity. Everybody at this point knows that carbon emissions contribute significantly to poor air quality. Unfortunately, emissions from the transportation sector as a whole are moving in the right, wrong direction, and are currently up by eight percent. What we also know is that the health impacts of poor air quality, including asthma and cardiovascular disease, are disproportionately experienced by people of color, because they are more likely to live in parts of the city that have been under-resourced, have less green space, more industrial activity, and have more car-centric infrastructure. Making a system that gives people more options will go a long way to decreasing these emissions and improve in quality of life across the city. Last slide. So, we have a lot of questions left to answer, and the scope of the proposal is getting refined as we speak, but tonight, we are kicking off our public process. We have PBOT staff here in the back of the room, if you haven't noticed already, with information about the proposal and the timeline, including the types of tools in our toolbox that we are considering. They're eager to hear from the public. I'm also happy to announce that as of 4:30 this afternoon, we have launched our project website, so folks can go there to learn more. Just a little correction, I published, I put this together before it published, the project website is Rose Lane, not Rose Lane Project. So, don't add the project at the end of that web address. In addition, we'll behold, we'll be holding three open houses in different parts of the city, as well as a survey, all in the first week of December. The survey and the open houses will include the proposed map of Rose Lanes and more detailed information about the pilot project as a whole. We are looking forward to integrating the information we receive from the public with everything we have learned from our community partners to create a truly thoughtful and meaningful system that improves people's lives. So, thank you for listening to me, and now I would like to invite a few of our community partners to provide their perspective.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. My name is Gabriela Salteria-Lopez, and I'm a longtime resident of Portland, actually growing up next to Paul Butte, so welcome to my set of town. And I am the Bus Riders Unite Organizer for Opal Environmental Justice Oregon. Opal stands for Organizing People, Activating Leaders, and we organize frontline communities most impacted by environmental injustice. I am here today to demonstrate our support for the Rose Lane Project. Our members and my colleagues, Maria Hernandez Segoviano and Tristan Isaac, who are not able to be here today, have been working diligently to co-create a plan that can bring the most benefits and lessen burden long-term, while setting a precedent for projects such as this one that can continue to be led alongside our communities. Portland has had a long history of community resistance to environmental racism and classism. It is important for us to continue to recognize that history as we continue to think about what we would like to leave behind for future generations. And things are changing, and with coalitions like the PSEF, or the Portland Clean Energy Fund, that are frontline-led and change, so the change is positive. And we want to congratulate Jeffrey, Andrea, Ramfis, and Faith for becoming part of the grant committee. And as a PSEF member, Opal looks forward to the leadership that you'll bring to this work. We know that this process, that when a process is co-created with communities most impacted by the issue, we get better outcomes, equitable ones. The Rose Lane Project is an example of that, and it continues to be built with community. We appreciate the leadership of Commissioner Udaley, Jamie, and the team at PBOT have taken with us and partners to push for transportation justice within this project. We look forward to continue working with y'all and make sure that this pilot is a successful one. Pilots like Rose Lane have already been implemented in other cities and have benefits of real reliability, safety, ridership, and much more. Our members who are transit riders and who further, and who are further and further pushed out to the fringes of a city due to housing crisis, projects that can increase, and prioritize projects that can increase access to lifelong, lifeline resource that is multimodal transportation. This pilot program has taken an intersexual approach to answer the demands of transit riders who deserve a safe, reliable, accessible, and frequent and affordable transit system. The process thus far has been meaningful and one that in which our challenges become opportunities to explore bolder action. Because even after this project, we are not done, and we must continue to invest in transportation justice beyond the transit network downtown. Our communities in outer parts of Portland can also benefit from red lanes. The Rose Lane Approach can address climate change, resiliency, also advance equity, including racial equity and transportation justice, provide the transportation choices for a growing city, to increase transit ridership, and help meet our twenty-five percent transit mode share by 2035, thus helping the region's vision to make transportation frequent, convenient, accessible, and affordable for everyone. And as we continue with this process, we welcome the opportunity for further discussion on how such projects can address any unintentional consequences that can be, come as part of it, particularly when dealing with enforcement and how we collectively can approach providing the resources for our communities to know such products are in place, so that benefits can be seen immediately. Again, we really appreciated the leadership of the Rose Lane Team, and we, our spirit to continue working together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Cam Marks. I'm the Director of Transportation Equity at the Rosewood Initiative, and I am a paid lobbyist. I want to thank Commissioner Udaley, Jamie, and PBOT for the wonderful leadership that they have shown on this project. Rosewood Initiative, one hundred percent, is in support of the Rose Lanes. I am winging it tonight instead of preparing, or going from prepared remarks, because I, over the last couple weeks, I've spent more time on buses going between meetings than I have actually being able to be at my computer to type up those comments. You've already heard about the environmental benefits of the Rose Lanes. I want to focus on another benefit that has not been mentioned tonight. As the community grows, and the population grows, I should say, and we have more vehicles on the roads, we also have more opportunities for people to be, for collisions leading to deaths and serious injuries. The city is on record and has done a wonderful job moving towards Vision Zero, but we cannot achieve Vision Zero if we keep adding vehicles to the roads. We have to reduce vehicles. We have to shift the mode share to transit and other modes. This project helps in that respect. I have had a, been very grateful to have, be able to put input into the process so far, and look forward to working with the Commissioner's Office and PBOT to build out the network to ensure that East Portland does benefit from this project. We have roads like 82nd Avenue, 102nd, or 202nd, Stark, Division, these are prime candidates to get Rose Lanes and to improve the transit system. People will not take the bus if they have a choice that is more convenient than the bus. And right now, that convenient mode is driving. We have to do everything we can to make transit as viable or more viable than driving a vehicle. Another thing that we have to keep in mind as we move forward is we need to bring our partners in the region along with us. As Metro moves towards the Transit 2020 Measure, we need to ensure that funding for enhanced transit is part of that project for every road that is being funded by the, or projected to be funded under that measure. We also have to ensure that TriMet does its part. If we're going to be allocating road space for buses, then we need to make sure there are buses in that space.
Yes.
We cannot have a dedicated bus lane and have a bus running every fifteen minutes. That is a inviable situation politically, but it's also an inviable situation for our system. TriMet must increase service wherever Rose TRIMET must increase service wherever Rose Lanes are provided. We have an opportunity to do that with this, and I and Rosewood look forward to working with you to make sure that happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Wheeler, Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Udaly and Jamie, for allowing me this opportunity to speak on behalf of the Street Trust, who alongside Opal and Rosewood and the other organizations you saw are part of this working group working on the Rose Lane Initiative. My name is Rita Porrell, and I am the Advocacy Director at the Street Trust, an education and advocacy organization working to improve conditions for walking, biking, and public transit, and to ensure that community members of all racial backgrounds have access to safe, healthy, and affordable transportation options where they live, work, play, and pray. Buses are really the workhorse of our transit systems, serving millions of rides each year, and much of our ridership is made up of low-income and communities of color. Given the history of displacement in our region, particularly of communities of color in Portland, there's really an overdue need for displaced communities who have been pushed out of the central city to, at minimum, have easy access to the jobs, recreation, and community that they are now further away from. Making buses move more quickly and reliably is crucial to both getting current riders where they need to go more quickly and for supporting this mode shift to make public transit the more attractive option for those who do currently have the choice and choose to drive. The Street Trust was a strong advocate for the Enhanced Transit Corridors Plan adopted by the city in 2018, and we're really excited to see that that plan is just not sitting on a shelf and rather being made into reality, but in partnership with a diverse and insightful group of community advocates. As a city, we really have momentum in this work, and we should not lose it. To truly be a transit-friendly Portland and meet our climate goals, we must take these steps towards making public transit the most convenient option of how to get around. As a mission-based organization, we know that while much of the work is to support policies that make it easier for, generally easier, for people to use alternative modes, we must also be co-creating these policies with the people they affect in order to put forward solutions that work best for different communities. That's why coalitions like the one convened for the Rose Lane Project are crucial in elevating voices of low-income people, transit riders, small-business owners, communities of color, elders, people with disabilities, and others who will be impacted by Rose Lane Initiative. I myself am reliant on our transit system to get to where I need to go, and I think these voices of those who use the system and who would use the system if it worked better for them are really necessary in solving for a lot of these barriers. I know today you're simply receiving an update and not necessarily making any decisions on the Rose Lane Initiative, but we're really glad to be here and look forward to earning your support and leadership in moving forward really transformative changes to our transit system, and in doing so, improving the lives of many current and soon-to-be transit riders. Thank you all.
Excellent. Excellent presentation. Thank you. Unless there's any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
A motion?
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Hardesty, second from Commissioner Udaly. Please call the roll.
Udaly?
Well, I just want to thank everyone who came to testify today. Of course, thank Jamie, who has been instrumental in this process, as well as my team at P-Bot. I especially want to thank Street Trust for this awesome poster. And I want to send a message to those in our community who are currently white-knuckling their steering wheels and really not liking this change. This is going to make life better for people who drive as well. The only way to reduce congestion is to get cars off the road, and the only real way to get cars off, meaningful way to get cars off the road, is to vastly improve our public transit system. So please, please consider supporting us in this effort, even if you never intend to get on the bus for the rest of your life, although I hope you do, and I vote aye.
Fritz?
So I'm still thinking about the flowers. The nicest thing a man has done for me this week is that a young man gave me his seat on the number-two bus, and I really appreciate it because that bus was blooming full, packed sardines. So Ken Marx, I absolutely agree with you that we need more buses in these nice new lanes. Thank you, Commissioner Udaly, for this initiative, and I really appreciate it. I'm from England, and you don't look at the bus schedule because there's going to be one every five minutes, and that's what we need to get to, to get people out. So I live here at PCC Southeast, I live by PCC Sylvania. It's going to take me an hour and 25 minutes to get home, and that's if I happen to hit all of the, and that's actually fortunately not having to walk the last mile home if I can catch the 44. So it's just an example of, it's not easy for people, and if you're trying to get to jobs today, care, to pick up supplies, you need to be able to have a reliable bus service that gets you relatively close to your house. And then, of course, it'd be nice to have sidewalks as well, but we can't have everything. So anyway, I think this is a real...
You should have had to take a jab.
Hey, we had the Transportation System Plan discussion, and I voted with everybody else to where we can put sidewalks, we should do it in East Portland because that's where the most disparate impacts are. So that means that there are not going to be sidewalks in Southwest with a foreseeable future, and I voted for that, which means that the transit should get us a little bit closer to where we have to walk along streets with no sidewalks and no streetlights. Anyway, thank you very much for this report. Aye.
Hardesty?
Bless you, Commissioner Fritz, that you, after a very long day, will spend an hour and 25 minutes trying to get home. I think people in East Portland feel your pain because when I ride the bus, it certainly is an hour and 20 minutes, and that's on a good day when the bus has actually stopped to pick you up. So I am grateful that we are moving forward with this proposal. I am appreciative of Commissioner Udaly's efforts to ensure that East Portland is included, but I'm ready to go and picket TRIMET myself because I think we give them an awful lot of money for the little we get back. So I hope that this is the, one of those other little nudges that pushes TRIMET over the edge to actually provide service for people who need it. I vote aye.
Wheeler?
Well, I am enthusiastically supportive of this. From my perspective, I understand that there are people who are going to be upset about this. There's no question about it. It's a fairly radical change in terms of how we move our transit system, but the reality is this: if we do nothing, more people are going to continue to move here, there will continue to be more automobiles on the streets, and the congestion will continue to increase, and that means the transit system will continue to be stuck in that same congestion. If you create an alternative strategy that can speed up the transit system, that makes the value proposition to individuals much better to choose transit. So a lot of people who are sort of on the fence, "Should I take the bus, or should I drive?" If you speed up the transit system, that will encourage a lot of people to keep their cars parked and take transit. And Commissioner Udaly made a great point that I hadn't really thought about, which is, you know, some people are still not going to have readily, you know, ready access to transit for a lot of the reasons that have been described here. But for a lot of people, it will make it worth their while to take transit instead, and that will take cars off the road. So if you still have to drive, that will actually make your commute shorter, too. So there is a win-win to be had here, and the reality is, we cannot create more roads through our already fully-developed grid system here in our city. And as more people move here, we therefore have to improve the transit system. And this, to me, is a real logical way. It's a first step. It's not experimental. It's been done in other cities to great effect. It will have the same positive impact here. So I thank everybody who's worked on this, Commissioner Udaly, and Jamie, and all of our community advocates who've worked so hard on this for so long, the Street Trust, and everybody else. This is great work. I vote aye. The report is adopted, and we'll move forward into the future. So thank you for that. Now, Carla, I want to do the last item justice, so I'm going to pull it with permission from the people who are here to present that, and they agree that they would prefer that we pull it and that we give it a different time slot. So if you could read it, and then I'll take it back to my office, and we'll move it to a different night.
Item 1032, Report on the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, Zero Cities Project.
So could we get Vin Mason and Oriana Minera just to raise their hands and be acknowledged, please, for being here? Thank you, because we do want to hear this report. It's a really important item, and I want to do it justice. I don't want it to be truncated. So thank you for your forbearance. With that, colleagues, we are adjourned.